Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Yountville Town Council for our parking workshop on Tuesday, July 16th, 2019. We will start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham Becker is excused today. Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And we will be holding our Pledge of Allegiance at our regular meeting at 6:00. So we'll go ahead to public comment. This is for anything not on our agenda, our agenda being the parking workshop. So anything not parking workshop related, anything? Okay. We'll move right ahead to our parking workshop. We're going to start with, I believe, Steve, you're going to kick this off?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Could you start with just explaining exactly what our format's going to be today?
I will. Our agenda today is to provide about a half-hour overview of parking supply, the employee parking management plan, opportunities, excuse me, also the enrolled, those not enrolled, some potential opportunities and ideas that the staff has identified. We anticipate that to go about a half-hour, and then we're allowing for an opportunity for a dialogue and conversation so that people can raise questions and look at something, and then a little more, wrap it up with some feedback or thoughts from the council. Again, there's no expected action or outcome. Councilmembers had asked for information on what the parking issue is or isn't. And I will start by saying, I've been now in Yountville going on 13 years. This will be my 12th year, starting 13. And as Councilmember Durham likes to comment, parking is often brought up as a conversation item, and it's been brought up a number of times. But the overall parking capacity of the town is generally reasonably sound. There are some nodes where we occasionally have pinch points, which are transition areas between the business community and the residential neighborhoods, and that exists in many, many towns and communities. So what we're going to do today is we're going to start with a tour of the parking supply. And we're using our new GIS technology, so we're going to be showing some things. Daniel's going to help navigate, and then we're going to need to, there we go. We're going, and then Sandra and I will share a little guidance, and then we'll talk a little more detail about the employee parking management plan and changes that have evolved as to how the town has managed parking. So as we start our tour, we're going to start on the very south end of town. This is very, and towards the Catholic Church and the gravel lot. This is a facility that the town recently improved and added the parking on this particular section. I also want to premise that the Town Council had a discussion about parking 10 years ago. And we didn't have this technology, but the direction and feedback from the council at that point in time was for the town to do its best to use its existing asphalt in right-of-way to improve parking supply and look at where we have opportunities. So we're going to go north. Here again is Washington Street from California. Did we pass Champagne Drive? There we go, thank you. This I'm showing because as we go, we're going to kind of go north. This shows an innovative approach and change with the town, whereas Champagne's a private drive, and we also now allow for the parking for the Hotel Yountville to be included on Champagne Drive, as it is a private drive. So again, I share that with some of the philosophies that have evolved. All right, let's go back to Washington. There we are, go north. So here we have Washington Street. The town has developed and provided for all the parking in the public right-of-way. And you'll see here, this is on the adjacent to Veterans Memorial Park. Now we're heading up Washington Street to Oak Circle. Again, provided public parking on both sides of the streets, again, paid for by the town. This is Washington Street to Mulberry, but we need to head over to Oak Circle. There we go. This I show because one of the parking nodes that the town worked at, Oak Circle Park is a connector park. It is not actually, here was an opportunity for the town to use some of our right-of-way to improve parking when Oak Circle has employee clusters. So we were able to get nine spaces in part of this development, again, paid for by the town, again, using our existing. So there we are going up to Mulberry. Let's take a look at Mulberry. Mulberry has a commercial district for the first two-block segment, and then transitions to a neighborhood. We have put bulbouts in to reinforce where the commercial parking areas are. Again, this area is paid for and managed through contributions by the town. Next. Post office and the community center complex. The town has built a parking facility, the community center. We're also responsible, like all of our commercial businesses, for ensuring that we have adequate parking for the events and activities that are hosted there. One of the benefits of the community center is that when it has less activity, it's available parking, but we also have to have the capacity for the events. Otherwise, if people are parking there that aren't supposed to be, and then there's an event, then those folks end up in the neighborhood. But it is allow for overflow capacity based on utilization. All right. Here's parking on Heather. This backs up against Hopper Creek, and there's public parking through this area that is often underutilized and is only one block off of Washington Street. Now we're on Yount Street. Yount Street to Fennell, principally employee parking for the businesses in this area. Again, parking on both sides. Fennell Road. The town has improved parking capacity on Fennell throughout both such stretches, the area closest to Town Hall and then the area all the way to the town limits. Again, we've done recent projects to expand two to three blocks from most of the center. All right. Now we're on Yount Street in front of Town Hall. Again, public parking on both sides. This starts a transition node between commercial, public, and residential. Let's take a look at Town Hall. All right. When the town renovated the Town Hall with our seismic renovation, one of the considerations the council asked was, is there a way to improve parking? So while keeping with the architectural integrity of the loop driveway, we renovated and expanded the front parking lot to increase parking. The other thing that's important about both the Town Hall lot and the rear parking lot is that by policy, we encourage the weekend and evening use of these lots. Signage is out there to encourage that, so that the parking lots here are able to be fully utilized. So again, efforts taken by the town to be part of the solution. All right. Humboldt. Humboldt again is one of our transition nodes. Again, it has parking in the right-of-way on both sides of the street. Some segments face residential, and some segments are commercial. Jefferson Street from Weber along Vandeleer Park. So this is a one-way segment, in case you were wondering. There is one-way street in the town, if you ever get a quiz. This is where it is. We're also potentially evaluating whether that could have parking on both, but presently that has parking on one way. And this is Weber along Washington and Jefferson. This shows the, an innovative area that we've worked to work on using our right-of-way plus private property with Lavender to do head-in parking, because head-in parking on Lavender generated greater, greater capacity than just parallel. Again, this is one of the creative ideas where we work with the applicant and the property owner instead of just using traditional, parallel parking, all on-site. All right, let's go back to Washington. Now you'll start realizing something looks different. What looks different here is, once you make the, turn north on to, from Yount, we don't have public parking on both sides of the street. Washington becomes narrower and does not have public parking. Here we're adjacent to the Velagio and Vandeleer Park. Now you see, we have some unimproved parking on the Old Town side, French Laundry, and then parking on the west side of Washington.
Steve, let's just interrupt real quick, Councilmember Durham, you have a question?
Is it Weber that goes all the way to the Vine Trail? Correct. And that's not part of this? Is it private? No, Weber, I didn't, we're not, Weber has, there is one block of Weber that goes from Washington to Vine Trail. It has de-eezement for the trail, and it does have heavily utilized for employee parking.
Thank you.
And Washington Street going north, again, we have here limited parking on the right-of-way on the east side, no parking again because of the wit on the west. This is the question potentially that we can be looking at. This is an old picture of Ponches. But the town has rearranged some of the right-of-way alignment in front of Ponches and Chichios, so there's some opportunities we'll talk about there, potentially.
But there is parking in front of Ponches now?
Informal, correct.
There is no parking in front of Chichio now?
Correct. This is Lincoln, which has some parking, mostly for the residential, on the east-facing side, and then parking on the west. And I will also point out while we're on Lincoln, Lincoln was a conversation about four years ago of increasing parking capacity, and when we met with the residential neighbors in that area, they did not express support, and we understand why, for expanding parking on Lincoln, or council made a direction not to carve into the park. So here is North Washington adjacent, this is the public right-of-way adjacent to the park and opposite from Napa Valley Lodge. We have some informal parking that we've worked on the lower end, grade and expedient make, using some of this right-of-way challenging.
When you say, how many spaces, 26? Is that current spaces or spaces that could be made of that?
Right now, that is the spaces that are in there using the informal gravel. And then this is Jackson Street on the very north end, and about three years ago, when we were doing the conversation, we've restripped and rearranged this to maximize parking. All right.
One last one.
Well, that shows Yount Street up to Hopper Creek, which is residential. Fennell Road, again. All right. So the reason I'm sharing some of this is, based on the council's guidance and direction, the town has been steadily working on, how do we use the existing right-of-way to improve parking supply where we have opportunities? So now we want to talk a little bit about the parking management program, and I'll turn that over to Sandra.
Our presentation has become a little jumbled, and for some reason, we're missing some items.
We need you on microphone.
So today, I am going to share with you the details of the employee parking management program and how that program has evolved over time. This slide shows some of the businesses that are enrolled, but there are actually 18 businesses that have been enrolled since the program started. But before I mention some of these businesses, I do want to share more of the history of the program and really what its goals are. And the program developed so that the town could be involved in better managing employee parking impacts and requiring employees to park on-site rather than being dispersed to the residential neighborhoods. And that's because we've been hearing from residents who live next to the business district that employee parking impacts in the neighborhoods were rather significant, and the impact was more the employees than the visitors to, to the businesses. And that was because employees parked their car for much longer period of time, for the period of their shift, and then when they returned to their car, generally at the end of the shift, their impacts with conversational noise, loud car stereos, it could be the exhaust from an idling car, or even an employee smoking, so that residents feel they couldn't open their windows. So this program started organically, really, to address these concerns that we've been hearing, and in 2010, R&amp;D Kitchen obtained use permit approval that included 18, oh nice, 18 tandem parking spaces, and those were designated for employee parking. And this business isn't enrolled in the employee parking program because the state predated that program, but it really marked a change in business owner responsibility for ensuring that employee parking impacts occur on-site. Then in 2012, Hotel Yountville obtained use permanent approval that required 10 management employees to park on-site. And again, this was before the formal employee parking management program. Those employees were to park on-site rather than in front of Veterans Park, and that was to keep those spaces open for park patrons. And so the program really took off in 2016, when we approved the first five businesses to enroll. Another one was approved in 2017. Six businesses were pulled in in 2018, and we've brought seven businesses in this year. And businesses are brought into the program when they obtain a use permit from the town or they amend that permit. So we're looking at the use, and employee and all parking impacts are related to use, so that's when our opportunity opens up. So as part of this evolution, the program has become more structured, and at first we required one-half of the employees to park on-site, but we've come to require 100% of employees, and that's been working well, especially on some of the larger properties. The way the program works is that an employer submits a monthly payroll report, payroll report that it confirms the total employment count. Each employee is then assigned a hanging placard to be hung from the rearview mirror when they are on shift, and the business is pulled into a program where we designate the number and location of employee parking spaces in the on-site parking lot. We may designate an off-site location for overflow employees when they're at peak employment or shift, and then we also designate certain areas that are prohibited, and we may call out certain residential streets or the community center parking lot. And then staff, this program has meant that staff conducts regular inspections of these businesses. We do several inspections on a weekly basis. We're looking to see that employees are parked where they should be, that they're not parked where they are not, and we take photos and then document it to meet with property owners. So I wanted to touch on a few businesses. The first one being Jessup, and they were one of the first businesses to be pulled into the program back in 2016, and we see that they have a parking lot that has nine spaces. Three of those spots at the rear of the lot plus an additional two at the back, tandem spaces are for on-site employee parking. They obtained approval for off-site parking around Yountville Community Park, and the approved areas were on the north side of Jackson adjacent to the cemetery, or on the west side of Washington adjacent to Napa Valley Lodge, in an effort to pull those employees out of the central district, commercial area, keep them out of the adjoining neighborhood, and, and then also allow parking near the park but not impacting the park patrons and their need for parking as well. So there are 11 employees total, seven or eight is the max number per shift, so that gets five in the lot and a number really up at the park. I also want to touch on Bardessono, that was pulled into the program in 2018 when they received approval for the Presidential Villa. They have 118 employees, and employees are required to park 15 in the rear parking lot, 19 in the valet lot. We've designated on-street parking on Fennell adjacent to the business and a Royal Grande to the town limits, and we've identified prohibited parking zones in the residential neighborhood and the Yountville Community Center. And then Vintage and Velagio are the last two that I want to touch on, because they're the most recent. When they received their use permit approval for the renovations, they were required to pull in one-half of their employees. Those 56 employees now park on-site. That's phase one of the program. We're currently processing phase two of the program more generally for the vintage property, and that brings in an additional 275 employees, which are the new APL employees for the business that will open in September, 127 employees for Bottega, Otomo, and Coqueta. And it, and we really confirm the location of those employees since they were already in the program, and then the remainder of the V Marketplace employees. What's interesting is that this property owner has fully embraced this program. They understand the benefit to them by designating a place for employees. They're able to push them closer to the highway, away from Washington, and this is opening up spaces on the property for guests and visitors where employees were parking in those zones, and the town's involvement in employee parking management has helped really benefit the property owner as well.
And just to clarify, that is private property?
Yes.
And they allow the public to park there even though it's meant to be dedicated to people actually going to the businesses on the Vintage Estate property?
Yes, it's a result that they don't really have a parking enforcement mechanism theirself, where they have, let's say, a gate where you enter and pay a fee, or they have their own security monitoring.
And some of our businesses have chosen to block off their parking lots, and, for example, Vintage Estate or the estate Yountville has not.
Not as of yet, yes.
Has not?
Has not. So then I also wanted to share that we have several businesses that are not enrolled in the employee parking management program. That's not necessarily a bad thing. Many of these businesses meet the parking standard. However, they haven't sought a use permit amendment that would trigger them being brought into the, the program. And over time, we'll see more of these businesses pulled in, and then we'll be involved in managing those employee impacts. These really fall into several categories, you know, those that received approval and they meet the parking standard and they continue to meet it, those that met the parking standard when they were approved, but the parking standard has changed. A good example is the restaurant parking standard that was modified in 2012, and more parking spaces were required based on the high level of service and the high number of employees. So many of the restaurants fell out of compliance at that point. And then we have some of those that are simply legal non-conforming, they've been here so long. So let's start first with the ones that meet the current parking standard. They're shown here on this map. I wasn't really going to touch on too many of them, except to know that V Marketplace, one of our largest properties, does meet that parking, their minimum parking standard, and there are a few excess spaces that they've been able to utilize in order to change uses on that property, most recently APL, the new restaurant, and we allocated some of those excess spaces to that business and pulled those employees in. Another interesting one is Washington Square, that really generally does comply with the parking standard. Of course, R&amp;D itself fall out, fell out of compliance when we changed that parking standard, but it's just off minimally. Then when we look at the next tab, it's those businesses that are underparked. Some of those you see here are Gates Estates and Hill Family that don't have on-site parking lots at all. All parking impacts are off-site. You see those with smaller lots like Ponches and Chichios, and then you see many of the restaurants that were approved prior to the current parking standard. And that explains some of the situation with businesses and parking. I'll hand it back to Steve.
All right. So staff has worked and heard from some of the feedback from business community and residents, and we're going to start in what I'm going to call some low-cost options or ideas that also don't necessarily have significant time constraints or something that we could do. One here is, with some restructuring and some maneuvers, we think we can gain three to four more spaces, moving towards the Guy Wire and adding a little in the informal gravel area here at the north end of Washington. There's also, we mentioned, we'll go, go to the next one, I'll go quickly. "The alignment in front of Chichios and Ponches at one point until we shifted did not adequately provide." That's now been resolved, so there's a potential, we think, for five or six spaces between, what I would call, we can recover the right-of-way parking in front of those two informally parked. There is an obstruction that Chichios has put in the right-of-way that is the town's right-of-way, but that we could certainly look at, and that would potentially give us six. Parking informally does occur in front of Ponches, so this would allow that to, to be in front of both of those businesses formally?
It would only be allowed to be parallel, not the diagonal, correct?
That is correct. That location there would be parallel. One of the things that also impacts parking is supply and availability. So in one of the conversations we had with some of the north no-yo businesses, one of the considerations was, would the town consider a three-hour parking, parking time limit? Because the thought would be, this would encourage the turnover for some of the businesses from the customer, because ironically, this is where the business community is challenged with other members of the business community, because some of those folks would pull in and their employees, and they watched the employee pull out, get out of their car, walk into the business across the street, and stay there for their whole shift. So we've identified three potential areas that might be worthy of trying a pilot demonstration project. One location is here. The other was a little bit of a strip in, adjacent to Yountville Community Park on Lincoln. And then the other area that we would consider that we think is appropriate would be the, on South Washington Street adjacent to Veterans Memorial Park. So the consequences there would be, if employees are using those spaces and they shouldn't be, this will help foster some behavior change. Now, I will also point out that this does have a cost to enforcement and expectation management, but that this is something that we've talked, and we believe that if there was some interest in the, the community and the council, that we could put a demonstration program. Parking time limit and parking management comes with signage, and that is a requirement of state law that we have to inform, you know, the person that has to be reasonably aware of what the consequences of their actions are. All right, next. We've identified a underutilized area. However, the town's preliminary discussions with AT&amp;T have shown mixed results. One part of AT&amp;T was interested and another part wasn't. We're going to continue that dialogue. This lot is on Adams Street, so it is in proximity to some of the no-yo businesses, and if we were successful in maybe figuring out a way to lease it and have requirements for, you know, there may be a fee associated with it for some of the businesses, but this is something that we're continuing to look at, some of the out-of-the-box ideas, because this would not impact the residential area other than the people walking to work, but it's an underutilized asphalt lot. This is another area I mentioned briefly, that we may be able to restructure parking adjacent to Vandeleer Park to improve its capacity, including installation of parking tees to guide property usage. One of the challenges in informal parking areas is a bad parking motorist can take up more space than they should, and then that makes some of the other space less, less available. And I'm going to say, this is a, this is a Yountville-ism. We don't like our signs. We love understated signs that nobody can read and nobody can find. That also includes our guidance to rear parking. We often have underutilized parking because people that aren't familiar aren't aware. And I'm also going to say, that's also why we reinforce the idea that putting the majority of the employees on property makes the most sense. So this is not, we're showing Somersden Priest Ranch, but this is practically any of the existing businesses. So this is where the town may need to say, we need to revisit our sign code to something that's that's workable, helpful, but it's something we've identified is, is worthy of putting on the list for further action. Valet parking. This has, and I will say, it's not necessarily an option that works for every business, but the, the value of a valet parking is that where they can maintain minimum fire code structures, it allows for more flexible parking and maximizing, because you don't have to have, the, the trained certified valet driver takes the risk and you can stack cars. So it gives us a potential for capacity increases. And we currently have a few businesses that have launched and are looking into that, including Velagio Vintage and North Block and Redwood on the weekends. And again, this is part of that thinking a little bit out of the box of, of what can work for the business. It does come with a cost to the business, obviously, of having the valet. This is a ride-share lot on the outskirts of town. One of the things that we're currently working on, staff, is trying to identify locations to pre-mark as ride-share drop-off. And the thought, we're also working with NVTA, the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, as to whether we could identify some of the existing bus stops so that we wouldn't take parking spots out. So it's something we're currently working on, because the congestion from drivers, we have a lot of bad drivers, and we actually need the business community's help to tell people to go to better locations. It's not uncommon, and I'm sure some in the audience have seen a Lyft or an Uber driver just stop in the middle of the street, let people off. But it's something we're working with, and we anticipate probably having a mock-up of possible locations. And then we would also communicate with Uber and Lyft as to where these locations are. But if we're having designated stops, we also have to have signage so people know where to go. I'm just sharing some of these because we have a love-hate relationship with some of the nuances associated to the tools to possibly manage the issue. This is not an appropriate size or scale sign for Yountville, but at one point in time, about six years ago, we had introduced a few signs in some neighborhoods. And it may be time to bring some of those back to remind in these transition nodes that people, whether they're the, the visitors or the employees, are walking into a residential neighborhood and to be respectful of our neighbors. And then we've had some complaints that limos and buses have, are entering the residential areas and not just staying there, but they idle for the whole time. So it, it may be appropriate that we look at identifying a few zones and prohibiting that, and adding a little tool for law enforcement to be able to encourage the, you know, the errant limo driver to go elsewhere. So again, I'm showing you a broad range of things and ideas that we've heard from a number of residents, and these are some tools that we might be able to use.
Is that, that's the issue that's on our regular agenda later, correct? Or it has nothing to do with it? The limousines?
Slightly related, but it's really, I mean, one, we haven't, we would, it would require formal council action to ban, and we'd have to be specific, so it relates to that. We are actively working on educating limo and bus drivers, so that's what your conversation tonight and your item about.
Okay.
One of the things, the general plan encouraged us, and it will encourage those of us in the future, to think out of the box. And that's why I mentioned a handful of the ideas. But, and it includes, next picture probably is a stacker, hopefully. I don't know if that's, all right. So these are a little more costly in longer term. So it's not a new conversation, but we've had discussion at different points in times over the last ten years about the full build-out of the right-of-way on Washington. This project is now probably in the low two million because of the utility undergrounding cost. And that would add capacity. But again, it would be replacing, I think, to the vice mayor's point, some of the existing informal into a more formal. But that's a, that's not something new to the council or some of the business community. It's really a question of how to pay for it.
Councilmember Durham, question, and then I think we're getting close to wrapping up. Is that correct?
We are.
So how many spots informally now and how many spots formally by doing that work?
Approximately.
Approximately.
Twenty-six to fifty. I share this because we mentioned briefly, future development of the French Laundry Gardens will allow for some restructuring of parking on Washington and Weber to maximize that for both. And then we have, the town owns the gravel lot south of Veterans Memorial Park, which has also been roughly projected and looked at as a potential for parking capacity. And then this is the handwritten site. I'm happy to report that it currently looks a whole lot more complete than it does in this picture. But the, again, private development, we're now getting, I think, tighter with the parking development and standards. Stackers. And again, this comes out of some of the general plan discussion. First thing I'm going to say is, this is not necessarily an appropriate solution in every location, but there may be locations in Yountville where the visual screening, our location, can allow for capacity.
Can we just clarify, there are no plans to put those things in yet? Be very clear that it would be, need to be in a very specific screened area, because we brought that issue up with a particular business a couple of years ago, and understandably, people got
And I think
a little alarmed that that would be along Washington Street.
The, what I would also say, some of these solutions work in certain locations, but not all locations. And again, that's going to be something
Or in no locations.
Could be as well. But if we don't discuss what's possible out there. I know you were worried about wrapping up, so the, this is the
Because we do have an audience that we want to hear from.
This is the conclusion of our formal presentation in terms of information. We will be able to return back if people have questions or something. But this kind of wraps up what we have.
Thank you, Steve. First, I'll, I'll ask the council for questions, then. We're not going to use our normal time limit today. As long as you all respect the fact that we usually go three minutes, because we want everyone to be able to have their opportunity to ask questions or make a comment. If we feel the need to invoke the timer, we will, but we'd like it to be a little more informal so that everybody can participate as much as you'd like to. But questions from any members of the council? Okay? Yes.
So when you're talking about increasing parking at Yountville Park and Chichio, he, well, maybe I save this question till last, but that's eleven spots. We're not saying that that's designated for employees. We're just discussing the fact that that's eleven additional spots that would be opened up.
Correct, Councilmember Durham. If it's in the public right-of-way, it's public. So if it was on the privately developed side, then it could be restricted unless there's a different type of formal agreement or structure.
Correct, unless there's another formal agreement.
Right. So when you're talking, the parking in front of Pontius and Chichio's would be public parking because it's the public right-of-way.
But the parking that would be along the west, left, west side of Yountville Community Park, you're talking about a priority for employee overflow for certain businesses in the management plan, but it's also available to the public? Is that correct?
I didn't make any specific allocations, because that would all come out potentially on how we might choose to fund or build it. So I don't want to presume, you know, it could be a combination of, of different things if it's completely, but it's a range of options could go there, including, you know, fully-funded public parking, and then it's first come, first served. It could be that there's a public participation, private participation agreement, and there's a public, the, the private sector pays in and they're allocated a certain number of spaces. So I mean, yet to be determined.
Well, that's, that's my point. We have, even in the audience today, we have businesses that have overflow employee parking in public rights of way where they're, they're not dedicated spaces. I'm trying to make that clear to the, the audience, that they are instructed where to park, but it's still public parking.
That is correct.
So it's a first-come, first-park situation. So ultimately, an employee could eventually not be able to park in that designated area if it's already full.
Potentially, and that's correct. And that's why we're trying to be judicious with where those overflow zones are and how much capacity we put in those zones.
Go ahead, a follow-up.
So in relation to the area that the mayor just referred to, is that in the public right-of-way or no?
Along the park, you mean?
Yeah, along the park.
I'm not sure I follow your question.
Well, I'm confused as to the public right-of-way in front of Chichio and Pontius as opposed to the public right-of-way of where we would talk about formally putting in parking spaces next to Yountville Park. Is that considered public right-of-way as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's the same public right-of-way, yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And as a kind of a follow-up to that, if we were to pave the spaces along the west side of Yountville Park, and there were businesses who should be parking their employees onsite or who had more employees than they said they would have, how do we enforce that to make sure it is really a first-come, first-served public parking?
Again, I need, there's different ways to go about it. So I would have to say, you know, if there's different ways to look at it. It could be that it's a designated zone and the businesses pay for the priority access to the space, and we do that knowing that that's the achieved goal. If you want it clearly as public, public parking, then you're going to have to have an enforcement mechanism and structure and time limits. Again, I, I say it with a range, because there's, could be different public policy outcomes you're looking for in what you want, and it's not a one-size that's all on its answer on that.
Thank you.
I also wanted to get back a little bit to the very beginning, the south part of Washington, where there's been significant sidewalk and curb and formal parking added, especially south of Champagne Drive, that now I think people have gotten used to. It feels like it's always been there. Same with Fennel Road. Folks, remember, the south side of Fennel Road used to have no parking and no sidewalk at all. And now we have, I don't know how many dozen parking spaces there.
In the last ten to twelve years, the town has had a number of small incremental projects where we've improved pedestrian mobility and developed the public right-of-way to improve parking. And I think if you look at it, you know, other than the topography, completion in north Washington in the right-of-way is really no different than what you have down adjacent to Veterans Memorial Park, where there is parking adjacent to the park there.
Has there been any thought yet about, related to timed parking, especially the north end where you were addressing in front of Jessup potentially or at the community park, the impact of employees that would not be able to park in those areas then?
I, well, here's what I will say. Again, yet to be determined, because if they are just showing up, not putting their tag on and not parking where they're going, that will become part of the enforcement structure.
Yeah, we'll leave it, we'll leave it at that. Okay. Any other questions from the council?
A lot, but I'll wait.
So like I said, we'll, we'll try to be more casual about all of your interaction here today, but if you would, please come up to the microphone, and if you're comfortable, state your name for the record. And if you have a question or a comment, please, like I said, it's not your fifteen minutes.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
My name's Lynn Hughesby. I live at, up on Jefferson between Pedronee and Starke.
Starke.
There's never a day that goes by that there isn't at least three or four cars out in front of our house. Yesterday, they started arriving at one-thirty. When they started leaving, they woke me up, because they have the window open this time of year after midnight. It'll be the same thing tonight. It happens several times a week. And that's just the cars in front of our house. The cars go all the way down the side streets, but I'm not really going to comment about that. It's something I've been dealing with for years, not just a month or two or several years. And I don't see it getting better. It's, I see it getting worse. And the cars that come into the neighborhood, depending on the day of the week, if it's Monday through Thursday, they start arriving shortly after noon. If it's the weekends, they, they're there. I've had people, I can hear them out front. They start coming at six o'clock in the morning. So they face that all day long. And sometimes it's been as late as one, one-thirty at night when these cars are leaving. And it's tough to deal with. And it's not something I've enjoyed. I think it's completely taken away our neighborhood. And I would sure like to see something changed. And to me, I think the only thing in our neighborhood is going to be three-hour parking. I, that's the only way you're going to keep all these cars out. And I, I, I'm talking about as many as fifteen, sixteen cars just in the little area around our house. And that's all I really have to say.
So you're proposing the, the limited, time-limited parking on Jefferson potentially or, or all of Old Town even?
Yeah, well, no.
I just, Washington.
I don't know if that'd work in other areas, but I think it would work in our area, because when these cars come here to our neighborhood, it's for nine or ten hours. It's not for two or three hours. It's for nine or ten hours. Like I said, the cars that were right out, they were in front of my house, and they were also in front of Esther Lamb's house, who was on the Starke side. They always go there because there's a shade tree. So those are the first two spots that are taken. And, but there's easily fifteen cars on the weekends and maybe more.
Councilmember Durham has a question for you.
We spoke yesterday. I, I just want to clarify, do you feel this is a guest issue, an employee issue, parking issue, or a mix of both?
I think it's mainly employee.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Who's next? I know there's a next. Don't be shy. We have to stay here until like nine o'clock, so.
Hi, Carol Schaming. Here as a resident since two thousand and one, minus three years in Chicago, but we're back. But also, I'm looking at this in the lens of being on the Park and Rec Commission. And the parking that, I was just going through, I've been on the Park and Rec Commission since January of eighteen, so eighteen, what, how many months that's been? Anyway, on our meetings, I went back through all of our agendas that I've been participating in, and there was never anything about, and maybe that's not part of the Park and Rec, but it seems like, because the parking additions, especially Yountville Park that we're talking about, that affects the park that's there. And I just, I guess I was assuming that that would be brought to the Park and Rec Commission just as a discussion or awareness. And I went back through anything, and the only thing I could really find that would even be pertinent to that is the capital improvement that we had in January that Joe did. And there's a lot on the paths, there's a Fennel Park path, other parks, there were an Oak Circle Park, obviously you guys know what I'm talking about, but there was just nothing about expanding the parking at the Yountville Park, Veterans Park, Vandeleer Park. And I guess, I thought maybe we would have been part of the discussion for the group. And we're meeting on Thursday of this week, but I just feel like we should have a little bit of insight on the committee for, and I know ZDRB does a lot of stuff to, they're really involved with everybody's decision-making, and so I just feel like this would have been nice to have been aware of that in employee parking thing that affects just the parks.
So what I, I know Steve's going to say something, but these are all purely conceptual.
Right.
These are just all ideas that are being considered.
Okay. Because I, I'm, I'm on it recently, but I did that, oh, this seems like
Well, actually, I think, Carol, to your point, what you've found is when a project moves out of discussion into some level of formal project, it does go. So for example, you know, at this point, we're having a very conceptual discussion about the three-hour time limit.
Mm-hmm.
The existing parking development. And we did have a very public process about five years ago, probably while you were back in Chicago.
Right.
When we tried to expand Lincoln, and we ultimately said that didn't make sense. So they will, but right now, and, you know, the gravel lot has always been a discussion point at the south end of town in a matter of time.
Right.
So from a process standpoint, when there is something specific, it will go. And I think, just to echo what the mayor is saying, right now, these are a laundry list of ideas. There are things, and this is a format to start getting
Right.
things going. And then as, if something has, takes root has, takes root, then it will go and, and be addressed at Park and Rec, if it's adjacent or impacting a park, may not go to ZDRB unless it's a, depending on the nature of the development.
The only thing to add on, I think more, Yountville too, in thinking with, is that occasionally on the weekends, walking around or get around there, it's very popular, that's reserved quite often for parties and the picnic tables for kids or adults, et cetera. And, and I, I mean, if you go by there, on the weekends especially, the parking places that are all on Jackson, is that, it's Lincoln is at the cemetery, those are all utilized. I mean, a lot of, many times you go by there, as well as everything that's on Lincoln and on Washington, the cars are pulled in now, and if it's not regulated as who's the right of way or the, the whole setup here, but those are really pretty popular, and people that just come in and drop off. I know when our grandkids come to visit, that's the one place that we hang out with two little boys, four and seven, and there's a lot of people that are there all the time that use that just to go to the park for an hour or two, and they're gone. So, I'd hate to have them not be able to park for that.
And I think that's why you heard the park beyond the list of three-hour is, there may be areas that we do that so that that's, and then the other areas are designated for long-term. And I mean, this was a very brief, but if we were to further evolve in terms of some of the more managed employee consequence, there could actually be signage and saying, you know, an employee parking permit required for these spaces. I'm just saying, there's, these are things that if we take something and fully implement it, it may get, but, but that question, I can guarantee you, staff is well-aware that we need, you know, we draw people to the park, therefore, there needs to be capacity to host some of those people, and the public parking at the park can't just be assumed that it's where everybody sends their employees, because then the people coming to use the park won't have access to the park.
Right. Thanks.
And I'll just add on to Yountville Community Park in particular. The area we're talking about, conceptually, is, until a couple of years ago, there was no parking whatsoever there, legal parking anyway, because the grade is so sloped. People would park there and vehicles are, you know, at a 45-degree angle. We added those gravel, kind of informal parking spaces that are available to anybody. That's in addition to the parking by the Children's Play Area. But recognize, the parking challenges are not all employee-related. I'm sure you've all seen, cyclists love to park up there too, and at the south end of town where there's unlimited timed parking, and will park there for hours to go on a bike ride through the valley. So, that's happening also, and we also have, I'm not going to ask for a show of hands how many people don't use their garage to park their vehicle, and how many people have multiple vehicles, they take up street parking also. So, we just have to be kind of fair about why the impacts are what they are. So, okay, who's next?
Good afternoon, not evening. Whitney Diver McAvoy with the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I'd just like to thank council and staff for having this workshop today. I think it's something that we've all, as a community, been talking about for quite some time. Thank you to staff for taking so much time to put together, I thought was a really great presentation. I think it covered all of the basis really well. I'd like to point out that, for the council, that we have gotten to a point where, I think you're hearing both from residents and businesses, that it's time for council and the town to take action to try to mitigate some of the parking impacts. I think this has been swirling around for quite some time, but I think at this point, we know that this is an issue that's affecting us, not only from a business standpoint, but also from a quality-of-life standpoint. Some things that I wanted to mention, the spots in front of Chichio's and Ponchas, if we were to explore that, I would suggest making those as a three-hour limit as well, so it would, there would be no confusion along that side of Washington Street. I'd also like us to look at the Yountville Community Center. That is a very large parking lot back there. I know that we rent that facility out for large events and celebrations, some of which that the chamber partners with the town on, and I'm not talking about specific instances like that, but as an opportunity of when, where are the gaps in renting that facility that we could utilize that for parking? I'd also like us to take a very strong look at the signage policy. I know that we are not a fan of signage, but I think Steve made a really good point about just having directional signage P for parking for our visitors. They would be more apt to park in those lots that you can't necessarily see from Washington Street. For instance, on Oak Circle, which Steve pointed out earlier, there's a great parking lot that's just down the street that has seven or eight spots that's never full, that we could utilize as a potential place for both visitors and employees to park at. And then, I'd also like to support the gentleman's request for signage in the residential area around the French Laundry. I agree, I've had residents speak with me about this issue as well, and I know I've experienced that over there as an impacted area. And then, I guess my question, last question would be for staff or council, whichever is appropriate. How do we move forward from here in terms of after this discussion? How do we go forward to take some sort of action? Is that something that needs to come from a letter from our residents or our business community to council, or is that something where our council members can ask for recommendations? What happens next?
I would add, just to what was just brought up, Creek Street, I'm a little surprised it wasn't even brought up yet. I think it's the only, probably the only street that doesn't allow parking where there appears that parking could be. We've brought it up in the past, and there was mixed interest there, but that's certainly an area in a fairly heavily parked part of town that goes without parking, and that was done many, many, many years ago, and not sure that it shouldn't be revisited. One thing to remember specifically about the old Oak Circle Lot is, it was heavily used when the restaurant was open that was right down the street, and-
Yes, the red, the former red employees knew about it very well.
Yeah, and also, what, what's happened is, West America Bank Parking has become a public parking lot also by default, and so we just have to be careful about the, the practices that kind of naturally happen. Some of them are okay, and some of them are temporary, and they aren't necessarily solutions, because while people around that former red restaurant feel like, oh, the parking problem might be a little diminished, well, remember that that restaurant's been offline for a good part of a year, so. And we're seeing the parking lot, again, which is a private property parking area on the estate Yountville, and they have been very good community neighbors to allow that to be public parking forever. So, maybe not forever in the future, but certainly forever now. Other questions or comments from the audience? Yes, Eric.
Thank you, Eric Knight, Jefferson Street. Just appropriately, just coming to this meeting today, there's a lot of parking out in front, but I noticed in front of Yountville Elementary School, there's white curb that says bus parking, that basically no one's parking there now, because I think people don't, and it's really a seasonal, I assume it's a seasonal parking, so there's five or six parking spots there that would be open now, not counting the parking in the school lot, but on the street, because it's, it says no parking for buses. So, and I would also concur with, you know, I think there's, I have a concern on Jefferson Street too, where I live, for employee and just general, just parking issues in that area, but I'm not sure, maybe at some point in the future, when the French Laundry Garden is developed, there may be opportunities to alleviate, take some of the parking off of Jefferson Street. And I would be concerned about Creek Street though, to take really, when you think about Creek Street, is to consider the fact that a fair amount of times when I'm driving that street, there's vendor trucks parking on the street and, and visitor taxis and buses that pull into Creek Street, and parking on both sides would possibly make that street impassable. And on the lighter side, I think I went to bed last night at 11:15, at sometime between 12:00 or 12:30. Jefferson Street's a pretty quiet street at night, but with windows open, it's a warm night, Peggy and I were woken up by someone saying, hey Siri, how late is In-N-Out Burger open? So, it doesn't take much to wake people up on Jefferson at 12:30 at night.
What was the answer?
I don't know, it was 12:30. I said, oh, is that in Napa?
So, we don't care.
I don't know what the answer was. Thank you.
I do have, Eric, on the white curb area, we actually changed that, and if you look at the signage, it allows for parking except for the specific time of the bus dropout. So, during the school year, you will find more utilization. I don't know why people aren't using it now, but it used to be red, and we went to the white, and the signs identify the two-hour periods that you can't park there, so.
I just saw, I just thought I saw a sign today, it seemed like it was a range of time anyway.
It is.
A sign that says bus parking means no one uses it.
But we tried to do, it goes, but we took it from being only bus parking to being more flexible, but you also see the consequence to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if Eric is referencing, does it say bus parking on the curb itself? Or is it just white?
It's white.
Okay. We might just revisit that to see if the signage is in the right place. I know there's foliage right there that might screen that a little bit, so people aren't understanding it. Certainly, locals know the timed parking in this parking lot. We see that regularly used when it's outside, actually, not even waiting until, I'm sure if our sergeant went out there, well, now it's 5 o'clock, but, ah, gotcha. So, it doesn't guarantee that the part, the hour parking, timed parking is going to be effective all the time for everybody. But, who's next? Come on, business folks, you're all sitting out there. First, first speakers first, or go ahead, Whitney.
Sorry, I just, I wanted to acknowledge the businesses that are here tonight, because I'm not sure, we have some new faces in the room, so I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them. So, I think Jessup Sellers is here, Handwritten, Napa Valley Lodge, Restoration Hardware, North Block, Hillstone. Is, am I missing anyone?
Silver Trident just walked out the door.
Silver Trident, because I just spilled my water. Did I miss anybody? Okay, so, but the point I wanted to make is that I think that there is a commitment from the business community, not just the Chamber of Commerce, to work together with town staff and the council to find some solutions to these issues, including in no-yo and so-yo. So, I just wanted to make sure I made that clear, that it's, it's not just the chamber, that there are individual businesses here that support this as well. So, thank you.
And one of those said business people.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for having this open dialogue. This is a really important topic that obviously impacts not only the community, but our businesses, and the fact that we're all sharing and able to talk about our ideas and so forth is really important. We, I just want to say, so Tracy McCardle, by the way, with Jessup Sellers and Handwritten Wines, we fully support the three-hour and potential rule in front of our business. Oftentimes, we do have cars that are parked there literally all day long, and I've seen it for, you know, I've been working there for the past 11 years, and it's been happening consistently ever since I've been there. So, we would fully support that, and we would be happy to be one of the businesses that perhaps if you wanted to have some kind of a, you know, experiment first, we would be happy to be involved with that. And then, I would just second, in terms of asking kind of next steps, so we would love to be a part of whatever communications happen after this. We would just love to be involved, and I do wonder what the next steps are after this, at this meeting tonight, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you, and that brings up a good point. I would suggest not waiting for the council or staff, if you have ideas, whether, and an example, what Mr. Knight just brought up, a specific, specific area along the street frontage and front of the school. Maybe it's appropriately signed and marked, maybe not. If you, as a business owner or operator, see patterns that we don't necessarily see and have ideas about what might work, then please feel free to volunteer that, and don't wait for us. Could your eyes help us see things that we don't always see? We're taking care of the spill on aisle two. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Peter Graffino from Madison Street. I second the, the issues about employee parking in Old Town. It's kind of a well-known problem among all of us who live there. But I also wanted to talk about, like, when I would come to Yountville as a tourist, the only parking lot I knew about was the one in front of Vintage, and if you were real smart, you knew about the one, you know, back by Bottega. But it's nice that they are allowing us to use it, but what's, suppose that were to change, isn't that kind of an elephant in the room in terms of the vast proportion of the parking spaces that the public currently uses?
I think that would be an accurate statement.
So, food for thought. But I know in the, in the general plan, there was some discussion of maybe, you know, that area being developed, so I guess I would encourage that if that happens, that, you know, at least parking situation would remain neutral. And also, whether any of the Vintage, I don't know if all the Vintage businesses fall under the 100% parking employee requirement, but it would seem that they've clearly got the space, so they should.
You're talking about onsite parking for employees?
Yeah.
I'll let either Sandra or Steve address that, if that's-
And then, one last thing, just about, and then I'll sit down, about the notification. I just did a search both in Apple Maps and Google Maps for parking areas in Yountville, and nothing shows up. So, the little commuter lot over by the railroad stop does, but there might be a way to get into GIS systems, you know, the public parking at least, so that people who actually look for parking in Yountville could find some of the public existing. Okay, that's it.
Good, thank you very much. So, Steve, you want to address that?
The answer is, the, they are in the process of 100% employee enrollment. It's been in phases, but the last trigger is in place, so that will be occurring.
Sandra says yes. Okay. Who's next? Come on, folks. Yes, Barbara, welcome.
Mayor, council members, town staff. Barbara Allen, we live on Jefferson, on the corner of Jefferson and Starkey. I think parking has always been a concern in Old Town since the business start developing at the north end. I see publications the town has since Mr. Rogers has been in town, has improved a lot, facilities and infrastructures and the bridges, there are beautiful parks, and quality of life is important for this town, for residents, it's been repeated all over in town. I'm sure it's on your mind, as a group, but the parking is really impacting the quality of life of people living in you Old Town. The noise, the littering, the damage to the property, they can open their cars right onto your plants, your gate, your fence, and they, because they're visiting or they're, they don't live here, really, my husband always says, they have no skin in the game. They damage your property, your street, they take off, unless we put up something to restrict their time and where they're supposed to park, limiting them from not spending too much time in the Old Town, so we can have a little better quality of life as a resident. For three-hour parking should be exempt for people who live in you Old Town, only for visitors, because we all have family member, you can use stickers or whatever, we have families member to come visit on the weekends, and sometimes we can't fit all the cars in our drive, in our driveway in the garage, so we should be able to park along our houses more than three hours. But visitors, please do something to help us. We are really suffering from not being taken care of this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm going to ask a question of the audience. We have about 40, 45 people or so here. Is anyone opposed- Is anyone opposed to considering timed parking? I'm not going to ask for specifics, you know, intersections or streets, but does it sound, generally speaking, timed parking is something that's, it sounds like it's being well-received, but if not, if somebody has an issue with it, seeing nobody raise their hand like I have an issue, are you concerned about the timed parking? And we'll need you to be up here, sorry to, thank you, Peter.
I have no objection to that. I would say that for residential, it might be nice to have some mechanism, if you have an overnight guest, that maybe there's a tag that residents could get, like one per house that would allow them to have a guest park.
That's exactly what I was about to bring up after I asked the question, but thank you.
Can I raise my hand?
It's even better coming from you.
I need to raise my hand now.
Yes, Steve.
I think before we, I think we need to look at some totality of, because what you're heading towards is not a three-hour time limit. What you're heading towards is a neighborhood residential parking limitation. And that's going to come with administrative costs, because all of the people saying, "It doesn't apply to me," or "The people I want to park in front of my house, it only applies to the people I don't want to park in front of my house." Well, that comes with a bucket full of costs and enforcement and expectations. So, I want to separate that from the three-hour time limit, because that needs a lot more thought and cost analysis. I think it's certainly something we can continue to have a dialogue. I think the three-hour time limit to try is an evaluation in a few of the zones we've talked about, because if we really want to talk about a neighborhood parking permit program, I think we need to really talk fully about what the, the cost, the implication, adding staff to do parking enforcement and management, those types of things, or the program will not, you know, I want to be honest about how do we deliver and meet expectations. And without an enforcement mechanism and a consequence, we will not deliver on that. And that's kind of the cusp that we're at with, right now, as it is with code compliance because of limited staff. Doesn't mean it's not something to further evolve, but I think we need to talk about that the two are different, and they have very different implications. The other challenge also, when you look at a residential permit, is, or, you know, how many people have been to Carmel, one of our markets? If you go to Carmel, you're going to find parking meters and strict enforcement. They have eight parking enforcement personnel. They actually turn it into a revenue stream in the commercial areas to pay for the management of the permit requirements in the neighborhood. And, I mean, I'm just saying, it's something that we might want to talk a little bit more about, an incremental approach at a few things.
But I think it's fair to, you know, we're saying that we're bringing up a lot of concepts, mainly the commercial area, that we're looking into, and we should welcome concepts in the residential area that may not happen, but we're considering them. And I think it's appropriate that Steve brings up, there are side effects to all of these things. They're not automatically just good or just bad. I think the idea of timed and residential needs to be further evaluated, but there are ways to kind of protect the homeowner's interest of when your neighbors, or when your friends or family come by, how do you let them park for more than three hours, that kind of thing. So, yes.
Yeah, I had just one point to reference. In San Francisco, there's obviously the zoned parking by neighborhood, so you get the tag. But the parking folks also have these tags, you can go and you buy them basically to hang that let, you know, you can get 10 of them a year or something like that, that let you, you know, have a guest to come in. So, you don't have to go full towards, you know, zone parking, you could just have something for sale that, you know, pretty low impact, like you can get 10 a year for something like that.
Thank you. Also recognize, when the town brought on an enforcement officer for parking and other violations, we then got the complaints that we were turning into a police community and there was too much enforcement. So, you know, we're a little bit of a...
I have four tickets to prove it, so yes.
And I also want to clarify, that was a, that was a volunteer. That was a volunteer. I certainly think we can add it to the list, but in terms of, you know, a question was asked, and this would be some council guidance, that I see some things that can be done fairly short timeframe, if the council's interested, and we can bring a package back to you. But moving to recover the parking in front of Chichio and Ponchas, if that's of council interest, that's a pretty straightforward thing.
Yeah, so before you start doing any kind of wrap-up, I want to make sure, yes, please. Sure.
I have a question about Chichos and Ponchas. My name is Nancy Caskey. I live on Madison Street. And if I take a left onto Washington, if there's cars parked at Chichos and Ponchas, it's already tight. I mean, I have to be careful that I don't get hit by cars. So, if you're going to let people park there in front of Chichos and Ponchas, where's the sidewalk, or where's the, where's the way for a pedestrian to walk on that side of the street?
There isn't a sidewalk.
How many spots are there that you, that you want to have for parking there?
The discussion on that, because what I would say, the sidewalk that should be walked on in that area is on the other side of the street. There is not a sidewalk. You're looking at six, possibly seven, in that area.
And you're not concerned about the street being too crowded and congested at a major, where people come from the light and come into town, or try to leave town that you're, you've got parking right there?
No, because the area we're talking about is removed from the intersection. It is back beyond the, it's immediately in front of the two areas.
Okay.
Nancy, could I have you get closer to the microphone, please?
So, if I wanted to go into Ponchas, I would have to kind of cross the street, and then just come, like, go find a, a different crosswalk and come the other way?
Not necessarily. I mean, people informally park there now and walk in, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, it, it isn't set up now.
It just seems tight and a little bit unsafe.
It's tight, and it would be, there is existing walkways. For example, the Chichio's covered porch is actually over the public sidewalk. But that goes back to the old 1800s development.
Right.
And the same, so that's where the sidewalk would be, and it's continued. And there's a lean-to on the Ponchas that is actually in the public sidewalk, again, dating back to the early turn of the century.
Okay. So, we're supposed to walk on their sidewalks and...
I'm not going to tell you where you're supposed to walk.
Read that cigarette smoke. Okay, all right, thank you.
You need to be responsible for, you know, the, the walking decisions that are safest for you.
In that particular area, the council, this is dating back many years now, we actually had our then Public Works Director design sidewalk right along that area that would go north of Jessup, all the way to the corner. And there was significant pushback about making that look too urban. It was all about safety, just to your point. Right now, you're, you're expected on the east side of the street to go from an ADA-compliant, state code-compliant sidewalk that ends, because there are two parcels that have been grandfathered in that are not required to have sidewalks. And then you get back on the sidewalk at the corner. And when the town looked at paving, or making a defined curb and sidewalk, people in that area, especially the business owners, were adamantly opposed to it. And so, and for other reasons, not just that, but we, we shelved that idea. People thought it was too, even putting parking tees with paint to designate those as parking spaces, people pushed back saying it wasn't appropriate in front of those businesses. So, that's kind of the, the challenge we have, is your safety walking on the east side of Washington Street, and how does that change the aesthetic? Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Cindy Capton. I live at 6565 Yount Street, which is directly across the street from the council, I mean, from the town hall and the school. And my question is, I have a question about the parking at the school. And it's sort of a, they have a very large parking lot, and nights and weekends, there's really not much going on there. And I wondered if there's any dialogue or restriction about parking at the school.
The, the short answer is, it is privately owned, so the school does, under an agreement, allow external parties to use it, so you will see some activities. As far as making it completely public parking off-hours, that's something we can talk to them about, but it is used, it is part of the equation for a number of special events and activities.
It's privately owned by...
Well, I mean, it's the school district.
School district.
So, in terms of saying that, it's, you know, it's a different level of public.
Okay, thank you.
It's still controlled by, by the property owner, which is the school district.
But they have, to your point, they have expressed a willingness to work with folks, and I don't think they terribly proactively ticket on weekends and informal use. But, again, from a liability standpoint, I don't know that, you know, they have to be cautious of how they approach it, just like those of you in your business do.
Another underused, except for specific use, is the Seventh Day Adventist parking lot.
The town is also, that's on our list. I've talked with several of you on different occasions. Right now, it is being used. We were successful in securing it as part of the parking supply for Bardessano during the temporary construction. So, again, that could be something that is broadened and maybe more formally put into the town's employee parking management program, so that businesses that were participating could have their employees park there, and we could figure out a lease structure. That's on our discussion list. It's something we're pursuing.
Okay. So, we designated about 90 minutes for this workshop, which means we have about a little less than 10 minutes left, because we do have a regular meeting at 6:00. So, if there are other comments or questions, I would invite those now. If something has come to mind since you spoke earlier, feel free. Anyone? Anyone? Okay. Steve or Sandra, did you have wrap-up comments?
I don't know that I have wrap-up, but I think there's a few.
So, we can ask questions, sure.
Okay, so, are you looking for wrap-up comments from us two? Okay. I've made several, some are just kind of thoughts, general comments. I got to start out, I'm kind of surprised nobody here talked about their trash bins. I hear, I get lots of phone calls about that. People, especially in Old Town, there's so much parking, people have to, like, watch out the window on Sunday night till somebody leaves so they can get their trash cans out. So, I know firsthand, on almost a weekly basis, that that is also an issue, and that kind of dovetails into the, the three-hour limit. I'm absolutely okay, especially in the diagonal area in front of Jessup. It makes a lot of sense. It can easily be managed, you can mark tires. When you do that in the neighborhoods, I think, I'm not sure the best way to do that, but I have certainly been in many businesses in many locations, I bet people have too. They're looking at their clock, and they go, "Up three hours," and they, three people throw their keys at one other person, they all go out and move everybody's cars six inches, so, you know, their tires don't get marked and things. So, you know, maybe that's going to work in some areas, maybe there's some limits. You can't park here at, you know, times when people are sleeping or in the middle of the night. So, I'm kind of open that I think some of that might fit in some areas, and it may not be the best solution for other areas. I think we need to have that conversation. I do think we need to have a pretty serious conversation about the community center, too. There are absolutely times when we have pretty big events there, and the parking lot, I totally get should be reserved for those events, but there, there's got to be a way that we can signal, "There's nothing really going on today, and, and this can be parked in." I've seen people who, you know, maybe just put the cone out, "Free parking today," or, you know, "Private event, can't park here." I think the community center needs to fall into that discussion. It doesn't, seems to be a little far away from Old Town, where I think we're really hearing the crux of the problems, but maybe some of the employee parking, maybe some other things can go on there. But I think that community center needs a, a bigger discussion. And I would be remiss, I was, I def, received an email from a resident, I really don't know where he lives, I think he lives in Old Town, just guessing. He asked, "Is it okay for a car to park if I have a gate that goes into my walkway that gets me to my house? Can somebody, you know, park there?" Well, I told him I would, you know, bring it up, this, that is the public right-of-way, and I don't think that we can legislate away bad behavior, which is very unfortunate, but we can't do that. So, but, and I think I know a council member who happens to have a gate in front of their house, too, that sometimes it's hard to get in and out of. But I definitely just wanted to let him know that if your gate is in the public right-of-way, I think it's going to be very difficult for us to be able to say, "No parking in front of anybody's home gate." So, and just my last comment generally is, I would really, I know that, that the town, when we look at use permits, spell out where employees can park, how the parking management works, and these with the businesses who come and ask for their use permit. But I would also liken, Whitney brought up as well, and encourage, that a little more communication goes out from the businesses. You've got to work with your employees. We're hearing comments, and this needs to go back, and there, there should be some kind of dissemination plan. It's difficult to get it out to all the employees. I don't know if people have mailboxes or memos, but I like hearing that it needs to be a, a two-way street. So, just to wrap up, I, I think a lot of our issue is really in the north Yountville area. I would like to continue conversations regarding the community center and encourage businesses to also work with their employees.
Okay, thank you. Before we keep going with council comments, did you have any wrap-up comments, Steve?
No, I was just going to talk about some things that I think, from a structural standpoint, we could lay out for a course of action.
Let's hold on to that until we, make sure we get time from the council. Councilmember Durham, we're all waiting to hear your comments on this.
Because I love talking about parking. And, and I, I appreciate those who came to my office hours as well, and I do appreciate the business community that I've spoken to. And I'm only going to be snarky once and say I lived in San Francisco for 13 years, and I never parked in front of my home, so I'll leave it at that. But I, I think, one of the reasons I asked for this is because I wanted to understand the employee parking management plan better. And what has come across to me is our intent is to have 100% of the employees be on-site. That proves to be an issue because of my still confusion with tying it to the use permits, which run with the land, that cannot be changed. That makes it very difficult to be consistent, that makes it very difficult to move forward. And I'll reiterate what I've said before. What that means is Red reopens as a restaurant, they still will not have an employee parking management plan, because the use permit will not have changed. If it changes to retail or something of that nature, then they will have an employee parking management plan. Unfortunately, that's the way it is set up. So, with that being said, my focus has always been on, on employee parking, and what it's going to take to make those employees either be 100% on their sites, or give them the opportunity to park somewhere that's not in front of someone's house, and directing them to a neighborhood. What has happened recently, because I am in full support of the community center being utilized as some sort of program, and I'm surprised, and it's unfortunate, a lot of the homeowners behind the post office and that area are, have, a couple of them have come to me, because Bistro Jean T., who was informally parking on the community center lot, to get away from everything, have now been reminded that there are people paying for this lot, and they need to be able to have access to it. I apologize, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but at our last presentation, I think we've heard that that community center was utilized 30%, 37% of the time last year. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm all for the big parties on the weekend with those businesses receiving notifications that they can't park there, but what are we doing the other 63% of the time when we're talking about parking with Bistro Jean T., Hill, and Bouchon Bakery, and La Calinda, and Bouchon, and it's on and on? So, I, I would firmly like to see the community center become part of the conversation. At that time that we are renting it 70% to 80% of the time, then we can move forward. But at the moment, we're not. And so, there's a lot of spots there that can be utilized for all these businesses that are either grandfathered in or have that use permit that's never... are either grandfathered in or have that use permit that's never, ever going to change. I love the idea of the valet at Redwood and North Block. And, I mean, and Bardessano has it as well. Bardessano already has the stacked parking. Where's the opportunity to talk to those businesses to maybe, especially maybe in Redwood's situation, to ask that they stack eight employees' cars while that valet is there? That gets eight employees off the street, especially in the neighborhoods that everybody's talking about today, at the busiest times, that they're there all day. And as our neighbor stated, he believes that the majority of the issue is with the employees, which has been my position from day one. I, I'm not too sure what's going on with the rideshare lot over by the, the golf course. But it's, I've never seen more than five cars in it. And on the weekends, I mostly see people parking there to ride their bikes. It seems like it would be a big opportunity for a lot of, for Uber Lyft, for the, for the limos, and even for some buses, if there's something that we can do with that. I like the idea of a Big P parking sign. We have these highly stylized signs, which have moved quite a bit at our age, but also down at Priest Ranch, that nobody has a clue. But then again, we're asking 100% of the employees to be parking on property. So should we be directing people to the back of our age? And that's one of the reasons I want to have this discussion, is because I want to make sure everybody up here, all the staff and everybody out here, understands what that employee parking management plan is about. I am in full support of Yountville Park parking on Washington Street being developed. We have talked about it for quite some time. I, I know we want partnerships. I know we want these things. But it need, if we are going to have a discussion about parking, that is the most logical place to move forward with. I, I, I respect the discussion about the three-hour parking in the neighborhoods, because I believe that if it's indeed employee-based, that three-hour parking will, will help to alleviate that. But as we found from our discussion here, it just opened up a waterfall of 20 other issues below it as well that we have to take into account. With that being said, you're more than welcome to park in front of my house. Nobody ever does. And I will comment that I see Bouchon Bakery people parking down in front of Hopper Creek. So, I mean, some, something's being done, which is great, and there's a conversation being had. But there's still more opportunity, I believe, to get the employees away from the front of someone's gate. I mean, I will admit, I do drive from my house to Redwood sometimes. But when I walk, it's frustrating. It might happen more than once. But it is frustrating for me, you know, as a, as a community member here, to see someone parked smack dab in front of someone's gate. And I don't know what we can do about that. But once again, I think a lot of education with the employees with these businesses will go a long way. And that's it.
And just, just a quick comment about the rideshare lot, which is now owned by Napa Valley Transportation Authority. So they pretty much regulate that. And there's also a plan to add for the transit service, express bus, that they're counting on it being more utilized. But it is currently, as you stated, pretty underutilized for the most part. Vice Mayor, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Steph. That was a really good presentation. And thank you, Ms. Diver McAvoy, for speaking on behalf of the businesses. It sounds like a, a good partnership maybe in the offing. So kind of just to go through a list, and I'm going to start with the town manager's proposals. I can be in favor of adding parking in front of Ponchas and Chichos. The North Park, maybe not to the extent Councilmember Durham said. I'm not adverse to looking at that. But I think we talked about some sort of a short-term pilot project. I'd be in favor of that. I'm in favor of the three-hours in front of Jessup, Washington at the Veterans Park, and the Big Park, I think the town manager said, on Lincoln. Thank you to Jessup for volunteering to be a participant in that. I like the idea of doing tees on Vandeleur to kind of maximize. And I think that could help, not that there is a gate on Vandeleur, but speaking to the gate issue, because it's always a thing for me. If there's only one parking place and it's in front of someone's gate, which angel wins out? So it's usually, I end up driving around the block. But maybe if we use parking tees, it might help alleviate some of that. As far as signage for those kinds of things, I like the ideas, but I really don't like the signs. But hopefully there's a way to navigate all that, which would come forward as we make further steps. The other two signs that the town manager mentioned, parking in rear and quiet zone, again, I would kind of have to see what those look like. I do have a question. Councilmember Durham and I have spoken offline about the use permit issue. And when it comes forward, if quote, "nothing is changing," then nothing is changing. So I would ask that we, as a council, ask our staff and attorney to look at, how could we do something that would make that different? Because if someone comes and they have, I mean, business models are just different. Obviously, if parking standards increase for restaurants in 2012, and our service, our standard of service has continued to increase, then I'd just like to see if there's any way to look at those things as businesses come forward. I think also, and I do agree with Councilmember Durham, I think if we did some three-hour, and like all of us, we're a little leery of pilot or demo programs. But if we did some three-hour parking programs, I think it would give us a better idea of who actually was parking there. Because either there would be more cars, or there would be the same number of cars, and they would just rotate every three hours. And I think we just need to continue to be sensitive to, as we always have to be here in Yountville, we need to protect our residents, we need to protect our businesses, we need to serve all three legs of our stool. And I think we're on a good start toward doing that.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief in the interest of our timing here. But I've been on this council long enough to remember when we were being criticized for a lack of development up at the north end of town, and that it was, it was dead up there and nothing was happening, and how this has come 180 degrees, right? Every idea has a consequence, as we've been talking about today. Time parking sounds really good. So that means employees won't park on Washington. Okay, where are they going to go? Into your neighborhoods. They're already there. So I think the, the point that's been a, as valid a point as any, is if we can get employees on the properties, we don't have to sign the lots, because they know where the lots are. You know, we know that's where the, the most long-term parkers are going to be. And that frees up the streets for residents and visitors. How we get that to work is challenging. We have a lot of different, almost every block, it has a different set of circumstances. And we're trying to protect the integrity of our Old Town that has no sidewalks, no curbs, no formal parking. Literally, every, every property owner has a different setup of their frontage. And so parking permits will work in some streets, and they're not going to be effective in others. And the, the shoulder area closest to Washington Street has always been and will always be the most challenging. So that means Jefferson Street, all the way up and down the town, is always going to be challenged with this parking issue, I think. We have been as, I think, as creative as possible. We've shown a willingness to spend money to find solutions. But we have to be realistic about solutions and the unintended consequences. We've also spoken numerous times about the use of the community center parking lot. I looked back to see Samantha, to see if she was pulling her hair out, as we talked about, it's underutilized. We could use that for all kinds of things. As we tell her, we want more programming. We want free access to residents. And, and so I think she's still okay. We've got our sheriff deputies and sergeant back there in case she needs assistance. But if it's 37% used, is that only for full rentals of the property? Meanwhile, we have rec programming. Carol, you brought up parks, this is the rec part. What about the drop-in basketball times when people are driving in and playing? Or the more casual use of that facility, the library, things like that? Maybe portions of that can be, you know, the parking bollards, or whatever they're called, are different colors that are open to the public or limited for programming or something. But again, I think we've shown a willingness to, to be creative. That's why I invited anybody in the audience, whether you're in the room or listening, don't wait for us to try to find solutions, please. We always welcome your feedback, your ideas. And also, Councilmember Durham, you brought it up, I've brought up, the, the situation in San Francisco. Everybody has another place they've been, almost. Eric, I don't know if you've had another place that you've been in a long, long time. But where you, you never park. You don't even bother looking for a spot in front of your own home. A place like Carmel, similar circumstances to ours in terms of very small, very popular, and how do you keep the impacts outside of your neighborhood? They've tried it by not having street addresses. Nobody even knows what the street addresses are down there. So we will continue to try to find improvements and ways to, to protect our residents. Our residents need to also be a part of the solutions. I talked about, we're, we're talking later tonight about accessory dwelling units and how people can turn their garages into housing units. Well, that means more vehicles are going to be out on the streets, and that has nothing to do with our employees. That has to do with our residents and how they use their property. So it's complicated. We're going to continue to try to find solutions. There's not going to be one fix for the entire town. Nobody wants a giant parking structure that, that is an eyesore, even if it brought a couple hundred new spaces. If it's near you, you don't want it. If it's near somebody else on the other side of town, it might be okay. So, you know, we, we Californians love our cars, right? And so does everybody else that comes to visit. So we'll continue to work on it. And, you know, I appreciate the council members that have pushed for the conversation, and we'll continue to have that, that dialogue. So in the interest of the 16 minutes we have before our next meeting, unless there's any last particular comment from the council or Steve, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you all, by the way. I know it's often challenging, especially for all of our business community, to take the time out to come here from 4:00 to 5:44 in the afternoon. You're all welcome to stay for the 6 o'clock version. But thank you for your participation. Hopefully, people that are watching or reading about this in the Yountville Sun will offer up any ideas they might have. I know Whitney's done an excellent job engaging our business community, which is critical here, not just those of you that, that were able to come be in the audience today. And so we're going to, we're going to count on that kind of dialogue going forward also. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to our meeting in 16 minutes.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, thanks, everybody.